All right, I think we're live. Okay, welcome everyone to the May 5, 2021 Plastile Planning Board. I'm going to start the meeting with the ever exciting COVID statement. The Plastile Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. When there are public hearings scheduled, notice of this electronic meeting is sent to all abutters and published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper. The Plastile Planning Board is utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the Zoom program, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting. The link to access this meeting was provided on the town's website. There is a raise your hand feature of the program that will allow attendees to participate in the discussion. There is also a Q and A box for the public to type questions during the meeting. The public can also send emails with questions or concerns prior to the meeting to divos@plastile.com. All emails received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be read at that meeting. Please note, all questions and concerns typed into the Q and A box or sent via email will be read aloud to become part of the public record. The meeting will also be live on Plastile Access Cable, Channel 17, and will be live streaming on the town's website. Okay. With that, we are going to do a roll call. Charlene?
Tom Alberti.
Present.
Tim Moore.
Here.
Laurie Mallett.
Yeah.
Karen Robinson.
Yeah.
Max Sanders not here, she is excused.
Max Dobson is excused, correct.
Thank you, and I know that Greg also is not here.
Greg Talan is excused, correct.
Okay, Bill Coy.
Here.
John Cashel.
Here, here.
Okay. We can start, we will be appointing Mr. Coy with the first selection of the 2021 Planning Board Draft. Plastile picks Bill Coy as the representative ex officio member today, so welcome, Bill. And we will go to the review and approval of the April 21 meeting minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of April 21 as written.
Okay, I'll second it.
Karen seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? Passes 400.
Two in a row.
Okay. Well, we can open the public hearing at this point at 6:34, and we will, for the expediency, we're going to look at PB 21-05. This is a completeness of an application from Aaron M. Jackson, Don M. Jackson, and the Town of Plastile for a lot line adjustment. The proposed plan will transfer 4.32 acres of land from a parcel known as Atkinson Line Backland, Tax Map 6, Lot 7, owners of record Aaron M. and Don M. Jackson, to a parcel known as Frog Pond Woods, Tax Map 6, Lot 16, owner of record, the Town of Plastile. Transferred land will be added to Lot 16, and is not to be considered a separate buildable lot. Both parcels are located in the LDR zoning district, do not have frontage on a town road. If the application is found to be complete, the board may immediately conduct the public hearing. Okay. Take a peek at this. It is recommended that the application is found to be complete. Is this, we're going to be looking for any feedback at this point? Tim, are we just going to? Should be able to move.
No, I mean, from the planning board's point of view, it's just a standard lot line adjustment.
Yep.
I mean, we know the Concom has recommended to purchase that land to annex it to the town forest, which directly abuts it on all three sides, I think, actually. But, like I say, from planning board point of view, it's just a standard lot line adjustment.
I guess the only question I have is if there are any abutters, you know, we also could seek some commentary if you have some information you'd like to provide.
Have you reviewed any part of the application or plans that you'd like to view, if you feel necessary? I'm excited to do that.
Does the board have any questions, would they like to hear commentary? I'm comfortable with the documentation that's been provided.
Yes.
Mr. Cashel, do we have any abutters?
No.
Okay. All right. So with that in mind, does someone want to? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, there's just that, the draft motion is prepared. There's just one condition.
Okay, yeah, good point, John, I saw that email. Just want to read that aloud. I don't have a copy with me, but.
Well, whoever makes a motion can read it.
I'm sorry?
Whoever makes a motion can read it.
Yep. Should we make it as part of the motion, or should we just declare it?
At the end of that motion with the following condition, and just read the condition into the, into the motion.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
Um, where is it? It's on page three, page three of the staff report.
Yep.
Okay.
So make a motion to accept the application for lot line adjustment that proposes to transfer 4.32 acres from the property known as Atkinson Line Backland, Tax Map 6, Lot 7, owned by Aaron M. and Don M. Jackson, to the property known as Frog Pond Woods, Tax Map 6, Lot 16, owned by the Town of Plastile, as complete.
Okay, and.
I'll second it.
We have a second, and we want to.
Add the other.
Include the additional conditions, is that correct?
I don't think we need to on the acceptance, complete.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Abstained? Against? Passes 400. According to the documents, it doesn't appear that there are any issues or concerns. There's not a whole lot of anything that we really need to get into. It looks like the basis of this is a sale approved by the Concom for some land that abuts the Plastile Town Forest, and seems to be a great addition for the town. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
No. That's great.
All right. Do we want to move to plan approval?
Yeah, so I move to approve a lot line adjustment plan that proposes to transfer 4.32 acres from the property known as Atkinson Line Backland, Tax Map 6, Lot 7, owned by Aaron M. and Don M. Jackson, to the property known as Frog Pond Woods, Tax Map 6, Lot 16, owned by the Town of Plastile, with the following conditions. Completion of the public hearing process by the Board of Selectmen is required by the RSAs for the purchasing of land.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Abstained? Passes 400. Great.
All set.
All set, thank you very much.
So the commission is just a public hearing for?
Yeah, it's procedural in that sense, so as long as that's done on a public, you know, according to what's required, then there's no other issues, then we're all set.
And someone will let them know if they want the my wire report?
Yeah, as soon as you can deliver that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the addition to the town forest.
Yes, we do.
Absolutely.
Love the town forest.
So 4.4 acres, and then, you know, in terms of what the Concom was looking at, it looks like, should we be able to extend the trail system and things like that?
Actually, it's kind of a trail, one of the trails already goes through the parcel, so.
All right.
Pretty well integrated into the.
Always a good addition to add to our conservation land. All right, so now we're going to move to the application PB 21-02. It is a continuation from February 17th and April 17, 2021. Would Mr. Zilch and Mr. Hall like to speak?
Tom, just so you know, I have to recuse myself.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Coy is going to be recusing himself, he's listed as an abutter to this property, so for the record, Mr. Coy is recused. That still leaves a quorum with four voting members.
Great.
Three. I mean, four.
Got it.
Did we do that right?
Yeah.
We have a, we have a quorum.
Yes, my bad. But earlier I said 400, should have been 500.
I know.
Thank you, Charlene, thanks for looking over my shoulder. Somebody's always looking. All right.
Good evening.
Floor is open.
Charlie Zilch from SCC and Associates with Bill Hall from Civil Design Consultants, and the owner and applicant, Kyle McManus, sitting over here behind us, if you have any questions for him. So, we're here on behalf of his planned residential development at 44 Sweet Hill Road. Bill was here about a month ago to update the board on our progress from the initial hearing, and we successfully advanced the application further since that last meeting with Bill. So as you may recall, we had four state applications associated with the project. The first, NHDOT for the driveway entrance permit for the roadway, that's been granted now, we have that permit, and no changes from the initial plan with that application. As for the remaining, they're all for NHDES. We have the septic system designs, which is conditionally approved pending receipt of the permit for DES subdivision for condo conversion, which is in itself conditionally approved pending receipt of the DES AOT permit, or alteration of terrain permit. And as you, Bill, probably explained, we didn't have comments from AOT at that last meeting, we received them shortly thereafter. All very minor comments, we successfully addressed those and sent it back up to Alteration Terrain for their review. The only thing that's holding us up right now, I think we're all set with them, is we have to have Fish and Game chime in. We had prepared a wildlife study in association with that AOT permit that's been submitted, so we're just waiting for Fish and Game to review it. With the wildlife study, there was really nothing above and beyond what you would normally expect in the, you know, a set of woods that's surrounded by residential homes. There's no rare and sensitive species on site, no prime wetlands, nothing like that or that nature, there's no reports from landings, spotted turtles, anything like that. So, I would imagine that once Fish and Game has a look at it, there'll be no holdup on it. As you know, we're providing a great deal of open space with this development, I think it was fifty-some-odd percent of the area was left in open space, if not greater, eh? Somewhere in that, in that range. So that may be the only delay, but as far as the remaining three state approvals, they're pretty much, one will trigger another, once we get that Fish and Game review. So, the other items, outstanding items, the condo docs, we had submitted those for town council review, had a couple of minor comments, and our attorney is working on those to get those back to him. Very minor, get that taken care of. So we also have, at this point, pretty much sign off from the, all the local departments, from fire, from Steve Keach, his, his final sign off is just a couple of recommendations for a conditional approval, and then we have, I think we're all set with highway department and planning board staff as well. So the only other remaining things, as you know, there were no variances associated with this, we do have four waivers, and those all involve the narrower roadway and pavement widths designed, so that we could lessen the overall site impact. So any questions on where we stand with any of the local and state review?
Laurie?
I have a question, and I didn't notice it on here the last time that you were here, but I did ask a question about the swale, and who was going to be responsible? And now I notice on page C4, it's added the easement to the Town of Plastile. Why is that wording on there, Town of Plastile?
It's on sheet four.
Laurie, you talking about?
On, on mine is C4.
Okay.
It's, okay, yeah, it's the first house as you come around the cul-de-sac. That is.
So if I'm not mistaken, that had been previously on the plan as well, and that's for the roadway construction and maintenance, because we have the narrow right-of-way width, it was recommended that we provide that easement to the town to make it at least the width of a standard right-of-way, so that they don't have trouble maintaining it, and utilities, things of that nature going in that area.
So who, because I asked you, that was in April, Charlie, you weren't here, I asked you who was going to be responsible for that, and you said the condo association. So now, so now putting it on, it says Town of Plastile, it sounds like the Town of Plastile is going to be responsible for it.
So I think there was some confusion in the question from last time, because we do have swales on sheet C8 and C9 that are outside of that easement at the toe of the slope, and that would be the homeowners and homeowners association responsibility. But those are outside of that easement.
So when, so when the plans came in, when you came in in February, it didn't say Town of Plastile on it, it changed when it went from February to the next time you were here in April. So who told you to put Town of Plastile on there?
Well, I think, I think they were on there initially, I remember working.
I have the plans with me that we first got, it doesn't say Town of Plastile.
The, around the roadway?
Is that sort of that, that long road down to the water basin?
Yeah, it's just the 15-foot.
It's to the water basin.
Now, that's, that's the swale for, that's going to be maintained by the homeowners association.
I think we're looking at two separate things here, because the swale, which is the upper left-hand corner of sheet C8, you can see behind unit six that the defined width that was added to the plan after the first meeting.
Okay, I have it, I don't know if you want to come over here, but I can show you.
Sure, I'll take a look.
Okay, so these are the plans that you, that I got in February.
Okay.
Right here, and then, the plans we got, these are the April plans, the same as this. Town of Plastile was added. I know this board didn't ask you to do that.
Okay, maybe, well, it was intended to be for the Town of Plastile, because this is the detention pond that's going to be capturing all the drainage from the roadway, and so wanted to allow the Town of Plastile access to that, should there be an issue with it? And so I think I just added that to clarify, we had Town of Plastile access through the easement on, you know, around the roadway and the cul-de-sac, and I think I just added it to that additional easement, it takes you all the way down to the detention pond or the, or the infiltration pond. Yeah, there's structures in the roadway that's going to collect that water, and basically divert it down to that infiltration pond, and should there be any sort of a need for maintenance or, or access down there, we want to make sure the town had clear access to it.
So that expense is going to be on the town, right? The town's going to take care of it?
It's part of the town's infrastructure for the roadway, correct.
Yeah. That's kind of an important thing, I know it's just one word and it's clarification, but I, you know, the board was focused on the waivers the last time, we hadn't had a whole lot of conversation about the town's responsibility for that basin, and I think when Laurie asked the question, I understood the same thing, and maybe it was misunderstanding, but to me, that was, you know, not the responsibility of the town. So, John, if you have some input?
Yeah, yeah. It's a public way, it's going to be a public roadway. All the infrastructure within the right-of-way is part of the public right-of-way authority. Eventually, and this roadway is signed over as a public way, the Board of Selectmen will actually have jurisdiction over it. Any stormwater management that's associated with the public way, which this actual swale is, and the piping and the utility roadway leading down to the retention basin, that typically becomes the responsibility of the town's DPW. I don't recall, and Charlie, you can correct me if you would like, I don't recall really any discussion before this board of how the stormwater features of this development were actually going to be maintained, who's going to be responsible for them. So, why don't we have that discussion now, but that, this, what I just told the board is a typical situation where the local DPW is in charge of maintaining the structures, the drainage structures associated with the public way. So all of this drainage that's associated with the roadway, that's within the public domain, which means the local DPW would be responsible for it. But if this is coming to, you know, a question of the board itself, we might as well have that discussion now, since we really haven't clarified it up to this point.
Yeah, and that's a good point, I mean, it's, I think it's a major piece that hasn't been addressed, I think maybe there were some assumptions based on answers and information that was shared. You know, I think about my community that has a public well, and the path to the pump house and whatnot, and I know we're not talking exactly apples to apples, it's the community's responsibility. So when I see that this is now the town's responsibility, and the question marks we might have, I think it's pertinent to have the conversation, so we can protect the interests of the town. Is there any other comments from the board?
No, I just, I just wanted to say one thing, when you originally had the whole plan, it was individual houses, correct? So when it got changed.
In the very beginning.
Yes, right, so now it was changed to condominium development, and I wonder where the town has to take responsibility now. I mean, it is an approved town road, is that correct? The main road that goes through there, or has it not been approved yet?
Well, not yet.
It still has to go to the Board of Selectmen, but it's being proposed as a town road.
Right. So I don't know how we can, you know, approve everything right now, you know, with that still standing, because I, I don't understand what the utility road, what the, whatever that other road is in there, I don't understand why we are as a town.
We never discussed the utility road either, and now, now we've gotten information about a utility road.
Right.
All right, well, I think this is a good time, Tim, do you have any comments before we put it, put it back on them to, you know, discuss, I know John has another question as well, or comment?
Well, I mean, I think one of the concerns would be, we have drainage coming off of town road, and if we don't also assume responsibility to maintain that infrastructure, then the drainage from the town road is going on to private property.
Right.
And if they don't maintain it, then we have potential for town road drainage to flood neighbors. So I think it's fairly important that we be able to maintain all the infrastructure, so we know the drainage is being handled properly. I don't know if there's some MS4 regulations that come into play there or not, those MS4 requirements have, have been updated just in the last couple of years, and so I don't, I don't know what the latest twist on that is. But I think there needs to be a stormwater pollution plan associated with this, or is that just for commercial?
There would be with this.
Yeah, that's one.
So, yeah, I mean, we need to see that, and that should, that should fairly carefully spell out who's, where the maintenance responsibility falls, I would think.
Mr. Cashel?
Yeah, I just want to point out, one of the town's requirements is that all subdivision roadways have to be approved as public right-of-ways. So there's no provision to allow for a private road to be built. You know, it's not like that in all communities, but in this community, that is the case.
I thought we had private roads.
There, there are private roads, but as far as subdivisions are concerned, we have to approve by ordinance public ways and not private ways. And then with MS4 coming into play, it does come into play. We are an MS4 community, every year we have to comply with the EPA requirements for point source pollution of all sources of stormwater, being managed, retained, treated. So in regard to this particular subdivision, it's a public right-of-way. I know you're not used to this stuff, but the public is responsible for maintaining the infrastructure involved with stormwater management, and ever more so today with MS4 requirements. Every catch basin that is in a town has to be identified, all the outfalls of those catch basins have to be identified, the, street sweeping has to take place now twice a year as opposed to once a year. The sediment that comes out of catch basins has to be properly disposed of, treated, properly disposed of. This is, MS4 means we're going after, as a state, all of the last points of stormwater pollution, surface water pollution. pollution, surface water pollution with the Clean Waters Act that began in 1970. So this MS4 represents the last leg of capturing the pollutants that enter into our water systems. That's really what it's all about, about in a nutshell. In this particular case, you have all the stormwater running into the catch basins of this new roadway. They're going to be all piped, all that water's going to be piped, and then it goes into an open swale that leads down to the retention basin. That retention basin has a certain elevation. It allows for all of the stormwater to settle and all the suspended solids to settle before outfalling. You can see the outfall at the end of it. When you look geographically, the north end of the retention basin, you can see a riprap outfall there. When the water flows over that, in all likelihood, it'll be clear water unless we have one big, major storm, and you might have some suspended materials flowing over it. But eventually, that just goes over land, and a lot of that water from the stormwater control mechanism will, will settle in that, that pond area, that wetland area. The whole idea is to get all of the pollution, the pollutants, the suspended solids out of the water before they go into that, that natural body of water. And therefore, it's cleaner. So that's what MS4 is all about. You know, before MS4 and before we really took care of, you know, best, well, implementing best management practices for handling drainage, you know, in the old days, you'd have, you know, a pipe just leading off the roadway and spewing onto the, you know, the nearest ground. You know, theoretically, it goes into the nearest drain channel. But now, all of this stormwater management requirements through MS4 and all of the other environmental laws require the treatment, retention, before they get into these bodies of water. So it would only make sense, even though this is, I know this is Greek to a lot of people and it's new, you know, it hasn't been practiced for all that long, but, you know, it's only natural that we're, we're approving a public way eventually, and that all of the infrastructure associated with that public way, especially stormwater management, is under the jurisdiction of the town. Towns are absorbing, absorbing a tremendous cost. This is an unfunded mandate. It's one of those so-called unfunded mandates. This is what you have to do with points of stormwater pollution. And sorry, but it is up to you to maintain it. That's what all communities are facing today. So this is a new subdivision, relatively speaking, relative to the town now having to implement MS4 requirements.
So it's going to have an accompanying, can you just give us a little bit more information about this piece going right down to the catch basin?
And how long is that? It goes down to, seems like a pretty long road.
Longer than the road, right? Which I think I read was 470 something feet.
Mr. Chairman, I have something more important. You know, this is an issue that did bug me going into this final stretch review, and I did send off questions to our consultant engineer, Steve Keach, if people had a chance to read through his answers. And I did compliment him. You know, my concerns were, you know, you have a 9% grade to a 17% grade. That's both for the piping and the riprap swale along with the utility roadway. Well, 17% is, is a substantial grade, and there's a lot of velocity involved with stormwater runoff at 17% grade. So my question to Steve was, you know, this is, you know, this is serious that we need to make sure the swale is designed properly to handle the velocity and volume of stormwater at a 17% grade for, you know, good long distance, trying, before it settles down into that basin. You know, you don't want, you know, a turbulent situation, moving the rocks around, you know, just pushing the swale out and the swale not being designed to handle the, again, the velocity and volume. And Steve Keach's response was that it, it has been designed to handle that steepness of grade and the associated volume and velocity of water. So that was his response, and it's in red ink.
Yeah, and I did see that. I think one of the questions I have is, again, likening it to the situation in my community, right? So a pump house, the community addresses the, the utility road out to the pump house. That means cutting back, you know, structure. If a tree fell on that, it's our responsibility, it's not the town's. So assuming that there could be an issue with the catch basin in the winter, we need access to it, does that mean that we need to plow that utility road? Does that mean that we need to provide other types of, you know, resources?
John, typically, I mean, it'd have to be the most incredible catastrophe. I mean, you know, once a year going down, making sure the pipes are cleaned out, but again, with this, with the steepness of grade of piping and swale, you're not really going to run into the chance where, you know, a half percent grade drainage pipe, you know, the water's moving slowly, anything that enters moves slowly, and it just piles up here. If anything, you know, you'll have storm events that are going to just flush whatever is in the way that did move slowly with the slow storm. You know, it's just going to move out. You really won't have to perform, or the town won't have to perform that much maintenance with this type of retention.
And I get it, and I'm just, I think that's what we're here for, is to look at the big picture, understand the potential, you know, challenges for the town.
If there was a water pump house at the bottom, you know, and that's, it was a communal well.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'd have to be provision for that, but, you know, over the winter months, there'd be really no need for anybody to actually go down there.
Laurie, do you have any other?
Well, I mean, so this open space, from what I can understand, looks like it's already wet. Is that right? It's wet back there?
Yeah, there is a wetland complex.
So now, we're going to be adding, because we've got the road itself, and now everything's going to flow down there, and now we're going to add some more water down there. It says basin, that, that, that could end up being like a little swamp back there that we're going to, are you going to create, are you going to build that up and create it? Or, I don't know, it seems like we're just going to add a lot of water back there.
Charlie, I don't mean to be talking for you and talking for Steve, but just so the board realizes, there are two professional engineers, the design engineer and then our consultant engineer. This is best management practice for designing these particular retention basins. They've all been sized to scale, so they're, they're going to handle the water associated with any storms in its 100-year? Have you designed for?
The actual is 50-year.
50-year?
It is, I believe, 7.3 inches in 24 hours.
Charlie, I think, you know, coming from an engineer and, you know, verbalizing what's been done in regard, in Bill, what's been done in regard to the design of this development, because we're going off the rails here in this hearing and going back to square one. But nobody on the board could ever design something like this.
No, John, no.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Can I, can I just call to order for a second?
If I have the floor, Mr. Chairman, otherwise you can take it away from me, but.
No, you can continue to speak.
I want to make the point that projects such as this are designed by qualified professional engineers. They put their stamp and signature on it.
And I realize I don't have the education they do, John, but you know what? I've been elected by this town to represent the people in this town, and when I see fit to ask a question, I will ask it.
Yeah, so just call to order. I mean, we're all, have the best interests of the town, right? So with that in mind, I think it's fair. We didn't have a full discussion about this property. Let's have an educated discussion. We understand that engineers have put some input into it. And John, just like you asked between last meeting and this meeting and got some information, some of that was just new to us as of, you know, the last couple of days.
And, Mr. Chairman.
Fair to have a conversation and get educated and understanding what we're looking at. Like I said, protect the best interest of the town, make sure it works for everybody.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm not disparaging anybody, okay? I just know for a fact, I've been doing this for 37 years, right? I can't design these roadways. I can't design these stormwater retention basins. Only qualified experts in the field have proven that they have the educational expertise and the knowledge, expertise, to design this stuff. And then we have a consultant engineer. They both put their stamps and signature, their professional, their professional qualifications on the line in designing this stuff. When they put their stamp and signature, they're putting their professional stamp and signature. They're liable for this stuff. This is all serious business. This isn't based on people's opinions.
Sure, and, and we understand that, right? That's their role as engineers. Our role as a planning board is to review the applications, make sure all the ordinances are being met. And in fairness, it is to ask a lot of questions and make sure we're protecting the town. So even though it was a small change in plans, it was an important change in plans. And I think because Laurie asked the question, who was responsible for the maintenance of the swale, and like I said, maybe a miscommunication, but Bill said it's going to be on the homeowners association. That was our understanding. So it does, we're not talking about whether the engineering is sound. We're talking about the responsibility for the things that happen in the course of the nature, right? Flooding, destruction, maintenance, plowing, things like that. So I think this is a fair conversation. But it is duly noted that Mr. Keach has responded. So do you guys have any more commentary?
Yeah, I, I understand Laurie's concern. I mean, we're changing landscape here, we're adding impervious area, what happens to all that stormwater? And so that's what, what Bill's task is, is to deal with that. She's right. I mean, you're going to have an increase in stormwater flow, you're changing the, the stormwater patterns of where they drain to. Typically, in this case, before you do any site work, and as it stands right now, the water sheet flows down to that wetland. So you get a storm, the water basically collects at the top of the hill and makes its way down to the, the bottom of the hill and into the wetland complex it goes. So now we're going to change that. We're going to add some pavement, we're going to add some roof lines, so we're going to add a little bit additional stormwater. So one of the things that Bill's tasked with, that, that your town engineer reviews as well as the state, is did he do a good job taking care of that water to make sure that it's collected and that it's treated and that it doesn't overtop or overburden the abutting properties? And so that's why he designed what he designed here. It's an infiltration basin. He basically collects all that stormwater at the street level from the roof lines and directs it to that basin. And what happens once it gets into that basin, and Bill can explain it much better than I can, it's given a chance to settle, as, as John spoke about, where the sediments are able to settle out of it and clean up the, the stormwater runoff. And it also gives it an area to infiltrate into the ground. And so in most rainstorms, that water that gets collected and directed to that basin is going to wind up and stay in the basin and infiltrate back into the ground. In an extreme storm event, the basin, if it's at capacity or then certainly at some point becomes overcapacity, there's a relief valve at the end of it that'll allow that stormwater to flow into the wetlands. But that's a once every 50-year storm event, and we don't see them too awful often. So for the most part, that thing will function, and you'll see at times some ponded water in the bottom of it, but given a day or two, it'll dissipate and infiltrate into the ground. It's a pretty simple solution. There's a lot of engineering that goes into it. There's a lot of different kinds of materials that need to be brought in to make it work effectively. Your town engineer reviews that in the field as well to make sure that everything's put in place and constructed as it should be. This is, this setup is, the most recent roadway that I worked on that was a public right-of-way was Carlos Way. And on Carlos Way, we didn't have as much drainage because it was certainly a flatter, wider expanse that we were working in on that development. And we did a lot more open ditch lines. But again, the engineering on that through Bill's company was we collected stormwater runoff and a lot of the roof runoff directed into several infiltration basins along the roadway. And those infiltration basins, they're all captured by an easement dedicated to the town. So if there's any issue, the town can maintain and, and repair as necessary. This is very similar to that. It's going to be a public way. We just want to make sure that if there's any maintenance that needs to be done or any repair, the town can have access to it. And so that's why we provided the easements, is very similar to the one that's already approved and constructed up on Carlos Way.
How far is the, the tree line from this utility road? Is it being cut back and, and built up and whatnot? What sort of area are we looking at?
From the center line to the, to the, I'd say the easterly side or the, the right side as you're looking at it from this plan view, probably back about 15 feet, and on the other side, it's probably 30 feet. So I'd say you'd have about a 45-foot width opening there, roughly.
Karen or Tim, do you have any additional questions?
There was one more when this is all done. They said, you know, it's going to be, you know, kind of interesting to see how many ATVs find this and using it. You know, they suggested a gate maybe, but at the end now, how do we maintain that if that gets to be a favorite spot, which it won't take long to find?
Do you have a linear foot dimension on what it is from the street they called the sack down to the basin? Looks about a good 600, if, if not more.
Off the top of my head, no, I don't count that number. Do you happen to have a scale with you?
I do. Do you?
I think it's a plan set.
I get a scaled plan set, too.
It's about 400. I think I read that the horizonway was about 473 feet, if I'm correct. So it, you know, visually looks a little bit longer than that.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I, and, you know, in Steve's response.
I mean, it's just something now.
In Steve's response, it says things like, "A watchful attention to repair," and, you know, "to avoid," and things like that. So I, I think it's a prudent conversation. The two things that the board has brought up since the application initiated were, I think, two important things. One was the dating on the response from the fire department. So again, I don't believe that we're holding this up. I think we're just being prudent. And a change in the plans, and it was an important word, you know, to, for our understanding of what the town's responsibility was. Mr. Moore, do you have any additional information?
Not really. I was going to bring up the same thing that Karen just mentioned, the providing a gated access to that maintenance road, which, which will be gravel, by the way. It's not, not proposed to be paved.
Okay.
So I think that's, that's probably a good idea to do that.
Yep.
Yeah, and Mr. Keach did mention it could be misuse by residents who may find it to be an attractive place to operate off-road vehicles and, which could literally shred and destabilize the gravel surface.
I've seen that happen.
So, you know, I, I understand the MS4 requirements. I understand that there's going to be some requirement, if the water comes off the private road to a privately-owned utility road, it could be deemed that, you know, the water came from our source and therefore caused some issues. But vice versa, anything that happens along the way to this catch basin will be of the town's responsibility. So, does anybody else have any input? Mr. Cashel, do you have any other questions or comments?
No. I don't want to start anything.
No, I mean, it's a welcome board. Healthy discussions are always healthy, and as long as we keep it civil and we get to the right, to the right finish line. I think it was a valid comment, though, right? That we thought it to be one thing and had a discussion about this piece, which we've never had a full discussion about.
You know, the only thing I want to say is, this is what happens, and I said this the last time, when you have, you know, incredibly prolonged review processes, that's, you know, things that were discussed and reviewed and, you know, so much information gets lost over a period of time. You know, if we were reviewing this over consecutive three months, you know, a month off to the next month, to the next month, fine. Usually, we can retain what's taken place during the review and keep up with it. But, you know, we've been reviewing this now how long, Charlie?
Four months.
February. And we didn't.
Yeah, we had, we, we dealt with this back in the fall.
Yeah, but, I mean, I think pointing that out, right? John, you were missing a meeting, we accommodated that, you know, we, they, they didn't have all the things they needed anyways. So I don't think that it was, that we prolonged the discussion. We picked out two very important pieces of information that we addressed, and I will speak to that when we look at the waivers. the waivers. We got some clarification. That's great. That's us being prudent.
Yeah, but the other thing, Mr. Chairman, is that we did start this review and went from a standard subdivision to this condensed subdivision, if you will. It's more of an open space subdivision. We initiated the review back in the summer. Is that when you first came in? And then it was quite a few months before you actually came back with the plans that pretty much resulted from the board's review. And, you know, that period of time, you know, we, most of us really forgot what we, you know, really got into. And that was to reduce the amount of environmental impact from this, of this 18 acres. And that's what they really tried to do. And, you know, we've gotten this far-
Sure.
-with the review.
Yep. And I don't think that we've lost the information. I think that we actually located information that either hasn't been discussed or has changed. So, you know, like again, I'm very comfortable with members coming up and asking questions about, you know, certain things and getting clarification. If we don't, then, you know, who knows what path that leads us down to. All right. So at this point, I'm not sure there's, if there's any other comments, please share. Otherwise, I think we need to move forward with this hearing and consider the four waivers that we discussed at last meeting. There was some additional feedback. One was from Captain Vesna, who said, "Hey, I used the new letterhead." And yes, this was, I should have been dated after the plans had changed. So he confirmed that his commentary was correct. The captain, excuse me, the fire chief was great, giving me a little education, talking about their ability to access portions, either, you know, [inaudible] or whatever it might be, to fight fires. The important thing was getting the truck down. It wasn't whether or not it could turn around completely. If they have to do a three-point turn, then so be it. So he confirmed that that was, you know, he referenced dead ends and things like that, where the, you know, as long as you can get down there to fight the fire, if you have to back it up, then we'll be okay with that. Mr. Garlington also provided some information. You know, I think that one of the concerns we want to bring up, or one of the things we want to address, is the more waivers that we do approve, you know, we get away from what's set in stone. But, you know, I think that's where Dan was just saying, "Hey, these are my concerns. They appear to be addressed." Does anybody have any questions about Dan's feedback?
No, but he does say, "The snow will be plowed, like we do with all our existing cul-de-sacs. We put the snow where it is the easiest and the quickest, trying not to cover utilities and mailboxes." So it's going to make a difference to where they are placed. And that's why we asked the question about utilities. The cul-de-sac will be okay for snow removal. We deal with, you know, 100% radius cul-de-sacs to true dead-end roads, and we will figure it out. So.
All right. So why don't we move to the waivers? And would someone like to do a motion on waiver number one, which, waiver request number one was Article 7, 235-32.c, Street Design Standards, requests for the cul-de-sac right-of-way radius to be 45 feet instead of the required 60 feet. Would someone like to make a motion to vote on this waiver request?
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver from Article 7, Section 235-32(c), and allow a 45-foot cul-de-sac radius for the lot, the seven-lot PRD subdivision project at 44 Sweet Hill Road, for reasons stated in the submitted request.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Lori seconds. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained? Motion passes 4-0, 0. All right. Second waiver request was Article 7, 235-32(c), Street Design Standards, requests for the pavement width of the public right-of-way to be 20 feet instead of the required 22 feet. Could I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver from Article 7, Section 235-32(c), and allow a 20-foot public right-of-way pavement width for the seven-lot PRD subdivision at 44 Sweet Hill Road, for the reasons stated in the submitted request.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Takes it, 4-0, 0.
After the two mo, the motion and the second, she'd ask for discussion on the motion.
Okay. All right. Any discussion?
That's it.
Okay. Ready to move to waiver request number three. Article 7, 235-32(c), Street Design Standards, request if, for the cul-de-sac pavement radius width to be 40 feet instead of the required 50 feet. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver from Article 7, Section 235-32(c), and allow a 40-foot cul-de-sac pavement radius width for the seven-lot PRD subdivision at 44 Sweet Hill Road, for reasons stated in the submitted request.
Can I get a second?
I'll second. Oh, Karen's going to-
We're going to give it to Karen.
Which one?
We're going to give it to Karen. She's a little quicker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I did not hear any opposed or nays. Motion carries, 4-0, 0. And waiver request number four, Article 7, 235-32(c), Street Design Standards, requests for the width of the public right-of-way to be 35 feet instead of the required 50. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver from Article 7, Section 235-32(c), and allow a 35-foot public right-of-way width for the seven-lot PRD subdivision project at 44 Sweet Hill Road, for reasons stated in the submitted request.
All, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Karen seconds again. All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm going to abstain.
Opposed? So we have a Tom, Karen, and Tim-
Yeah, 3-0-1.
Have said yes.
Yes.
We have one abstention.
Okay.
Lori, 3-0-1. Motion carries. Waiver approved. Okay. All right. So that leaves us with some conditions. Let me just read through this. Do you, is the board, does the board have any other questions? It looks like our next steps would, to be granted additional, conditional approval of the plan.
Should make sure there's any comments from the public or butters.
Yep.
John, can you see that?
Yeah. And Charlie, can you address the board while I'm looking there?
We do have a gentleman-
But we have a gentleman here.
Yep. Sorry, I couldn't see him behind Bill. Sir, do you have any public comment or? Okay.
Relocation of the electric boxes. That's already on the plan. It's correct.
That's on the most current plan.
Yeah.
Correct.
So one of those conditions is moot at this point.
Yeah, but I don't know that, we sent the plans in as a PDF. I don't know that we made paper copies.
Okay. I would, I would suggest, John, we still list it as a condition and then-
That's fine.
I don't see anybody. I'm looking closely to it. There's no-
Okay. Thank you.
I haven't seen anybody come up or on.
All right. If no other questions or comments from the board or the public, I believe that we can go to the conditional approval of the subdivision plan. Is this a good time to read the conditions, Tim, or is that going to be with the draft motion?
It'll be with the draft motion.
Okay.
So I must approve the subdivision plan for a seven-lot detached condominium plan residential development, run PRD, at 44 Sweet Hill Road, tax map 62, sorry, lot 29, with the following conditions. Number one, receipt of remaining state permit approvals and updates for the notes on the plan indicating permit numbers when received. If there are significant plan changes required as a result of any state permit process, the applicant must bring the plan back to the planning board for additional review. Relocation of electrical structures on the plan related to snow removal operations. Number three, receipt of final favorable review of condominium documents by attorney clearing. And I have two more. Addition of a locked gate on the maintenance road just north of the first catch basin shown on the plan, on page C9. And submission of a stormwater protection plan.
All right. Thank you. Tim, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Karen will second. All right.
So now you should ask for discussion.
Is there any discussion? Thank you, Tim. Well, I wanted to thank you because, you know, those are two conditions that I wanted to make sure were added. Any other comments from the board?
No.
Nothing from the public? All right. Move to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
And Karen, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your vote. Or opposed or abstention?
Yeah, I'm going to abstention, too.
Okay. Remind me, Tim, where that leaves us. We have two opposed, I mean, two in favor, two abstains.
Can I just say something? You can't really abstain if you participated in the proceedings. You can vote nay legally, and you can vote yea, but you can't abstain, especially when you have to arrive at a decision. This doesn't arrive at a decision other than, you know, a denial by abstention, but you don't qualify to abstain. Tim, do you want to chime in on this, being a senior member of the board? I mean, the chairman would abstain typically, but if your vote is necessary in order to have a majority vote either way, you have to vote. You can't take the abstention. There's specific laws involving abstention votes. You know, these people didn't come all this way to receive an abstention. You're either in favor of it or you're against the project. But to abstain, this project doesn't go forward.
I'm not, I'm not-
It doesn't, it doesn't do anything.
I'm not against it, John. I think I had a valid question tonight and-
So you want them to come back with further information?
No. I just wanted, if you could have let Charlie just answer my question to begin with, maybe I would have felt more comfortable.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry I got involved with trying to explain MS4, trying to explain stormwater management.
You're trying to say that this board has been, held this up. They came, okay, they did come for a conceptual a while ago, okay. So they must have had to do a lot of work because it was going to be a subdivision. They were going to be single-family homes. Then it got changed, so they had a lot of work to do. They came here in February. This board was able to be here in March, John. You were on vacation. You asked for them to come back in April. We were here-
No, sir, that wasn't the case. The planning board decided not to have the meeting when I wasn't present. You continued the hearing until I was able to come back.
This is, can I step in? This is unproductive in that sense because, for whatever reason, it was brought up, whether it was at the recommendation of the planning department. All right, we moved it. But that, I feel like, did not impact the valid questions that the board has put forth. And I appreciate, right, you guys have a ton of experience. I appreciate, John, that your input is there. I think that because the conversation, maybe you went down a path that wasn't as standard question and answer, right? It's put some of the members in an uncomfortable position. So I understand that. I do appreciate, I do look for Tim for some guidance, who's got way many more years of experience than I do, as you do as well. So here we are. We're at a situation where we've put forth a vote.
There's no justice being served this evening. When you have a review of a subdivision that's been going on as long as this one, that deserves an approval through the public hearing process, there's nothing less than an approval that's on the table. Now, they're going to have to ask for a withdrawal so that they can resubmit the application. But this does not deserve, in anyone's conscience, anyone's conscience, anything other than a favorable vote. But an abstention is intolerable. You have to vote yea or nay.
Okay, I understand. And in your opinion, and I respect it, okay? And I believe that you believe this project should move forward. Again, it's the elected officials here whose job it is to protect the interests of the town and the townspeople who elected us. So with that in mind, I'm going to ask the board, would we like further discussion? I know that the motion was put forward. I know it was voted on. If there was a discomfort level that brought us to abstention votes versus a yea or nay, Tim, are we allowed to bring this up for more discussion and perhaps for a re-motion?
Um, I mean, I think there's always the option to ask for-
For the discussion, I think.
Withdraw the motion and have another vote.
I'm going to do that.
But, I mean, I would, would agree with John. When you, when you vote to abstain, it's usually because, you know, maybe you were, this was like your first planning board meeting or something, that you were not familiar with the, with the project. But, I mean, we've all been here through all the hearings. So a vote to abstain really isn't, I don't think is quite right. So it either should be approve the motion or do not approve the motion.
Okay, that's a valid point. I'd like to ask to withdraw the motion. And I'd like to ask for Charlie and Bill to sort of respond to Lori's earlier questions. I know we've sort of done that, but if I can move this hearing forward, I'd like to do that. And with that in mind, are there any conditions that would make any members more comfortable with regard to that, that piece of the plan, that A, was originally designated differently, okay? And I'm not saying there's any fault or, or anybody trying to do anything, but that was a big change. And B, the communication about who's responsible, and I understand Bill's answer was directed maybe at a different portion of the plan. So that changed things. And we have every requirement to research that, ask questions, and get our questions answered. So in terms of the withdrawal, Tim, of the motion, I can just state that, correct? Or do we need to have board approval?
Typically, if the person making the motion and the second agree to withdraw their motion, I think that's all that's required. I don't remember this coming up before, actually. So, I mean, I would be willing to withdraw the motion if there's some concrete action that can be taken. I mean, is there information that we don't understand or don't have, or? I don't know.
Well, I'm going to ask the two abstaining voters if they have any other questions or, would they have additional questions and seek additional information if we withdrew the motion and continue discussion?
I, you know, I specifically asked the question, but I guess it was a misunderstanding that you didn't understand that that's what I meant, who was going to be responsible for it.
Yeah, I was looking at the wrong area on the plan. I was looking-
So that was, you know, I get that. So that was, you know, I get that. I get that's a miscommunication, no problem. But now, now I know that, you know, and, you know, it's a 50-year storm or however you categorize that, and I realize that doesn't happen all the time, but to me, now the town is going to be responsible for this, and this seems like a lot more that I didn't understand we were going to be responsible for. And we also got an email, I believe it was on Friday, and it was talked about a utility road, and I'm thinking, I don't remember talking about a utility road. So, you know, that, that's the standpoint I'm coming from right now.
What I want to do, though, is just from a procedural standpoint, is I'd like to see if the motion and the second are willing to withdraw the motion so we can continue discussion, allow for some input from Mr. Cashel, the board members, as well as the audience. Would you, are you comfortable doing that, Tim and Karen?
Well, I mean, like I say, if there's, if there's a way forward, you're fine. But...
Could you reread the conditions?
Yeah, and I don't really want to go into full discussion until we make a determination. If someone has some input on the procedural aspect of withdrawing, please share. Again, I value your experience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two ways we can go with this at this point in time. If the planning board would like additional time and ask any questions of any public officials before taking any more action on this, then we can do that. The, the other way to deal with it is to try to resolve it this evening. You know, I, I really believe wholeheartedly, you know, it's my position to try to make sure this board does not make decisions that the only alternative for the applicant is to sue the town and we go to court. And that should be avoided at all cost. The town can't afford to go to court every time a subdivision is proposed or a site plan is proposed. It's our job to flesh out and figure out and arrive at the most proper decision. That decision relies on experts. It relies on lawyers. It relies on engineers. It relies on peer review engineers. You know, we're supposed to do all the hard work before we end up getting to a point where we make a decision on this, because what's going to happen here, they'll have no choice other, if this board doesn't approve the plan, they'll have no choice other than to seek legal remedy. So we're going to have to go through a whole litigation process. And what will happen is that ultimately a judge will make a decision, they'll remand it back for the board to review, try to take care of everything possible that people aren't comfortable with, but to remand it back to the local government to make those decisions and, and bring the results back of the remanding action to the court, and the judge will make that decision. Our job is to just, you know what? They're planning to develop a piece of land in accordance with their U.S. constitutional rights, in accordance with all state regulations, okay, and in accordance with all zoning requirements and subdivision regulations, and everything else that goes into the local development of regulations. So they're not coming before us to propose anything that they don't have the constitutional right to propose for the use of their property. They're not proposing a nuclear power plant in a residential area. They're proposing a residential development in scale and character to all of the residential development that surrounds this particular area. Sounds pretty plausible as a reasonable use of land, which we all should have the constitutional right, if we own, to develop in such a manner.
Well, I will state this. I'm actually, you know, the level of detail that the board has sought out, clarification on information and potentially very important pieces of information, I think that's great. I think that's what we're here to do. If we can get feedback on that information and get our answers, we're doing our job as elected officials. We also know that on the legal side, whether we vote one way or the other, doesn't necessarily take us away from any legal action. We're still trying to do what's right by the townspeople that elected us, but I get that we're also trying...
You're much more diplomatic than I am, but I guess if you were sitting in your chair for the last thirty-six years, seven years, you, you may have...
Yeah, well, I'm just looking at this board and what we're looking to do, and, you know, what happened last week in a different town or a different area. I get that it jades you a little bit, but so far I don't think that there's anything unreasonable that we've asked for. I am trying to have a discussion so that if there are any unanswered questions, we can maybe move forward with this. So we have two options. Number one, I look at it as we withdraw the motion, we reconsider, and we revote, or we withdraw the motion, we ask for more information, and ask for a continuation of the hearing. Does the board believe those are reasonable next steps? Mr. Moore, you got any feedback with your years of experience?
I mean, that's, that's about the only choices, I guess, at this point.
All right, so I am going to ask if the original motion wants to withdraw a motion and the second, withdraw the second. We can ask a discussion, we can either decide that we, we can ask some questions and continue, or we can ask for a continuation so that we can seek more information.
I'd like to see us get more information. I'd like to speak, you know, maybe you, the chairman, speak to Dan again. He, Dan seemed to be concerned about the snow and pushing back the snow on the right-of-way and the snow storage area. I don't know, has Dan even addressed any of this utility road or drainage with the basin, or now that the town is going to have this easement, you know, what that's going to be for an expense for the town?
Yeah, I read his paragraph. We'll just find our answer on that.
I'm right now looking at some of Dan's responses to see if he has specifically talked about that portion.
I think Karen has something to say.
All right, go ahead, Karen.
There was no mention of this utility road. I think that's the main thing. All of a sudden it's there, then, oh my gosh, Mr. Towns, who's responsible for it? What happens if, you know, something goes there? Are they going to put up the gate? Are they going to do whatever it takes? I mean, this just came up all of a sudden, and I just want to see that the conditions will be met, and then I would, okay, I just want to know that it's not just going to be swept underneath. And this is not compared to another case that also happened here. So when it comes to legality, that is not what we're trying to do. I just want to make that clear.
Well, I'm comfortable looking at it from two perspectives, right? One is, yes, this came up today, but did we have enough information presented to us, including the responsibility of the town for the public road and, and the subsequent stormwater runoff? I think the one thing that came to mind was, were there conditions that would protect the town's sort of liability and responsibility for the utility road, which, to this point, was not necessarily fully understood to be under the town's jurisdiction? So that's number one.
That can be answered.
But number two, will we find good information, right, between now and the next hearing that will sufficiently answer questions to all the voting members? All right. Why don't we pull the, pull the motion for the vote and make a decision on whether we're comfortable asking, you know, whether you guys would like to ask more questions and do a revote on another motion, or if we'd like to push it off to the next meeting?
All right, I guess I'd be willing to withdraw the motion as long as we identify specific questions.
Right.
And if we can answer them tonight, we do a revote. If it requires more input from, from Danny or whoever, then we continue the hearing and make a motion at that continued hearing.
Karen, can you pull your second? All right, so Charlie, we've pulled the draft, the motion, I'm sorry. We can disregard the vote. I will ask one more time, is there some piece of information that we need to request from the town or from the engineer?
Someone wants to...
Okay, just a moment, please, I'll open it up. That you would like answered, and especially with the members here. Let's just make note of that. Lori or Karen, any specifics?
Well, I, I would, I would like Dan, the highway supervisor, to maybe address what kind of maintenance he thinks is going to be needed, that he's going to have to do, and, you know, we, I think he just addressed about the snow. I don't, I don't think he addressed anything about a utility road or any of that.
And, I'm sorry, could you identify yourself and...
Yes.
Okay. Is there, do you want to sit over here and speak into the microphone?
Still Kyle McManus.
Thank you.
So, two things. One is that the reason that this is a public road is because Dan specifically asked for this to be a public road. So one of the things, as the developer, from my side, when he asks that question, when, when he specifically says, "I don't want this to be a private road," and we make all the required changes to make it a public road, including the additional costs that's going to be incurred for doing the development, okay? He knows where the retention pond is going. He's seen the plans. The plans have changed, but they have not changed materially in that concept. That concept has remained since the original, we originally did this, okay? He does know where he's going to put snow and things like that, conceptually. He hasn't plowed it yet. That's why he's bringing those up, is because, and he did say, yeah, we can do this, we can do this, but it's going to come down to when a guy is actually there doing the work, to see what he does, to see how it flows best. That's why those things were brought up in the manner that they were. In terms of what the town requirement is going to require to access the actual retention pond and the maintenance that's required by that, I believe that the board should assume that when Dan says, "Please make this a public road because I want to be able to do X, Y, and Z," that it should be your assumption that he's thought through that, especially when plans have been presented to him, that says, "This is where the stormwater is going to be captured." It shows the access path to that, because that access path was on that. Last meeting, you all asked for this to go back to Dan, so conceivably you've got an additional written direction from Dan, as you did from the prior chief, which means he had a second opportunity to look at things, re-review them for himself, and put it in writing a second time for the board's consideration. My opinion, for whatever it's worth, if you came back to me a third time, why don't you do the job? Is kind of where it comes down to, because he's written it down twice, he's reviewed it three times, and he's given his recommendation with consideration. I understand that there may be certain things that you need additional information on, and I'm happy to, as I'm sure Bill and Charlie are happy to provide that information, and certainly if the board's decision is to look for additional expert consideration, that's your purview, absolutely. But I think to go back to the same expert, to ask the same question in a different manner, starts to get, it starts to get to be a delay on the developer's side.
So I do want to point out that no questions that we've asked are actually just the same question, right? One, we want a clarification on the date of the approval of the cul-de-sac, because the plans had changed, and we want to make sure that the date was correct, and that's being prudent. Number two, we had some questions about the impact on the Cape Cod berms that hadn't been publicly addressed, the impact on snow removal and the right-of-way and the easements and the utilities. I, again, I think it's prudent to get clarification. Nowhere in this conversation have we talked about a utility road. That being said, you know, the question I think is prudent to say, hey, Dan, what's your feeling on that? I wish it was already addressed, because I don't want to be stuck on this. I will ask the board members to recognize, to John's point, that if we are making a decision on our vote, that it be aligned with the county ordinances, town rules and regulations, and so on. Whether we're fully comfortable, because the plans changed and we addressed that, hey, I think that's us doing our job, but whether or not the plans changed now, does that change our, you know, overall opinion based on our ability to follow? Does this plan follow the rules, the ordinances, regulations, and requirements?
Mr. Chairman, bottom line is, again, you can do what you want, but regardless of what Dan wants, that retention basin has to be maintained by the town. It's a requirement of MS four. It's a public road that becomes public stormwater, which has to be managed by the town in accordance with MS four. That, that's what's going to happen.
John, I appreciate that, and that's, you know, that's a consideration for me, because I agree. I was, I was not, you know, and maybe that's our inexperience, maybe it's what, you know, whatnot. And, and I think a lot of part of it is what the plan, you know, the change in the plans and the answer to Lori's question at the last meeting. This is, in essence, new information. We talked it out, so, but I, you know, thank you for that information.
MS four is as cryptic as cryptocurrencies are to the major part of the population. I don't even know if Charlie can explain it. I mean, I have to deal with it all the time, you know, and I do know what the regulations call for. That's what they do call for, you know?
So before, is there any, are there any other conditions with regard to this property or this piece of the...
I wanted to say something, Tom.
Yes, sir. Could you s...
I'm a part of this project. My name is Lawrence Ordway.
You want to grab a mic? You guys don't have a second one?
Could you state your name again, sir?
My name is Lawrence Ordway. I'm a butler to this project. And I support this project. Listening to tonight's discussion, what popped into my mind is this is something
that we butlers are going to have to live with for the next hundred years. Maybe not myself, but the town's going to live with it at least a hundred years. To take another month to support two members, to get clarification on their thoughts, piece of cake. I think we should vote, I think the board should vote for a postponement for any decision, at least for another month.
Thank you. All right, so Karen or Lori, I'm going to ask again, are you, would you be willing to vote, or do you feel that we need to get some further information that's going to change your ability to vote on this?
I think a lot of my questions have been answered. I just want to make sure that these conditions that we brought up tonight are going to be met. When we brought up the utility road and, like, even the gate, whatever, anything to do with that utility road, if it's been answered, I just want to know, is that going to be put on the plans, and that will be there?
It will be. It will be.
Yeah.
You know, if I, just take a second. You know, I just kind of remember when we came in with these plans, the, the concept plan back in October. We had a plan that, that met all of the PRD requirements in regards to road width, access into the property, the setbacks, everything. It was a kind of a by-rights design. And one of the things that came along with that is, obviously, we were able to provide larger home areas, there was more pavement, more runoff, larger septic, larger site disturbance. And the board reviewed it, showed their concerns, expressed their concerns about the, the overall impact, and asked us to, to work harder. So we did. You know, with the, in regards to the reduced right-of-way width and pavement widths, Kyle's made some concessions to go to three-bedroom homes as opposed to four-bedroom, a smaller footprint, you don't see big attached garages on these things. All those things added up to a pretty substantial difference with the plan that we brought in and that we've developed through all the state agencies, as well as your reviewing engineer. Overall, I think it's a really good plan. I think it's a, it's a, it's a well-blended plan of, of your thoughts and, and Bill and my engineering on this thing. But like I said, there's been some concessions made to get to this point. Overall, I think it's a really good plan. I know Dan's had a chance to look at it several times. We have talked about the drainage, we have talked about the fact that we've got curbing, we're using, you know, catch basins and piping to move stormwater. Most roadways, when you're afforded more room, we do sheet flow into ditch lines, and then the ditch lines collect it and bring it to a, a stormwater basin. In this case, we're doing it through piping and, and catch basins. He understands it. He really didn't express any concerns the times I met with him. I don't think he, he expressed any concerns with you, Bill, at all. So I think he's pretty comfortable with it. I think he really does understand it. I know he doesn't speak to it in that letter, but we have had an opportunity to meet with him, the chief, personally, and we've talked to him on the phone several times. It's never come up, but I do believe there truly is an understanding as to what we're creating here, and I don't think he has any, any issues with what we've done. I think it's pretty standard. As to John's point, with MS4, you're finding that we have to go and create these stormwater areas before it was just a simple pipe under the roadway with no treatment whatsoever. Now the, you know, these regulations force you to treat all the stormwater, pretty much every drop of it, and you got to account for it, not only the volume, but for the treatment of it. And so we've done that in this case. But what happens, and this isn't just this town and just this example, a lot of these plans that we put together have this sort of a situation where you've got to find an area where you can create these infiltration basins and, and collect the stormwater and get it to it. And part of that, the issue with that, is you have to have access out to it. I just did a plan set in Danville, very similar, have a roadway a couple hundred feet long to get to a stormwater area. Obviously, if it got to be down slope, you got to get gravity feed, you got to get the water to flow to them. Same thing here. Just have to get down the slope to the flat area where we can build this thing. And so, as a result, you have an access road to get to it. But it's designed as a gravel roadway. It's not incredibly steep. It's fairly safe to get in and out of, and it provides good access for the town.
Can you offer any other thoughts and ideas that might protect the, the town's responsibility, you know, as Mr. Keach responded about, you know, private, you know, people coming on there with ATVs? Again, will it happen? I don't know. But, you know, I'm just trying to think about something that may appease and address the, the concerns that, you know, hey, the town's got a responsibility for this, and, you know, to what expense?
No, I, I think the suggestion for a gated access there, only available to the highway department or fire, I think that's a great idea, and that's, we have no problem adding that to the design plans.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to ask the board again, essentially do a straw poll to see if you're comfortable with voting, regardless of what your vote's going to be. Because I do feel that we need to move forward with, either with yes or nos, or the board can make a determination to gather more information, if you feel that you need some, some sort of information will help your decision whether or not this application meets all the proper ordinances, regulations, and requirements.
Okay.
Okay. So let's go back. Tim, would you mind rereading your long-winded motion?
So I moved, moved to approve, because this will be the same, same motion I did before.
Yeah, can we, do we have to read it out loud?
I'll, I'll reread it, but it will, you know, for, so here we go. I moved to approve the subdivision plan for a seven-lot detached condominium plan residential development, PRD, at 44 Sweet Hill Road, text map 62, lot 29, with the following conditions: receipt of the remaining state permit approvals and updates to the notes on the plan indicating the permit numbers when they are, when received. If there are significant plan changes required as a result of any state permit process, the applicant must bring the plan back to the planning board for additional review. Relocation, or condition number two, relocation of electrical structures on plan related to snow removal operations. Number three, receipt of final favorable review of condominium documents by Attorney Charles Cleary. Number four, submission of a stormwater protection plan. And number five, addition of a lock gate on the maintenance road just north of the first catch basin, or other optimal location. I'll add that. Verbiage.
All right. Karen, would you be willing to second this motion again?
Yes, I will.
Karen, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All abstained? All opposed? Motion carries 400. Application is conditionally approved.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Tom?
Yes.
You going to read this bit?
Thank you, Charlie, for addressing my concerns.
Yes, I do need to read something, if you would like to hear it. Thank you, Charlene, again.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you for sitting through this.
Gentlemen, if you could just hold one minute, I do need to state this publicly, and it may affect you. This needs to be included in the meeting record. Pre-construction meeting, prior to work commencing, the applicant will need to schedule a pre-construction meeting through the planning department. Bonding, after final approval and prior to the scheduling of pre-construction meeting, the developer must submit a bond estimate worksheet for review by the planning board, review engineer, PBRE. Once reviewed and then approved by the planning board, the bond for this project will be set at 50% of that reviewed approved amount. As the site work progresses, the developer may request a reduction with the recommendation of the PBRE and the approval of the planning board, and draw the bond down to no less than 10% of the site work costs. This 10% will become the roadway performance bond and be held for two years upon acceptance of the roadway by the board of selectmen. Impact fees, prior to acceptance of the roadway by the board of selectmen, the developer shall pay a new roadway impact fee of $2,265. This is based on a calculation of $5 a lineal foot times 453 lineal feet of new public roadway. If this dimension should change, so too would this assessment. There will be additional impact fees, school, recreation, and public safety, applicable to the construction of the individual dwelling units. Those fees are assessed as part of this subdivision approval in accordance with the planning board impact fees as adopted by the planning board, August 2019. Impact fees for the individual dwelling units are payable prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for each unit. Okay?
Understood.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
I got it. I got, I have it already. I'm going to make two comments. Number one, I kind of, I stand by what I said earlier, which is, you know, I respect our position as elected officials to be prudent, ask questions, get answers. I'd also like to keep it civil, you know, so that we're all working as a team, because I think at the end of the day, we have the common, common interests of the town, okay? So I just want to put that out there. One thing I will say is that my, my thought, this goes for future plans, right? So my feeling is that Dan's concern about ever accepting a private road is that naturally they're going to end up becoming private, uh, public roads. So if he doesn't give input ahead of a private road designation, it's going to end up coming public, and then he's just going to deal with it. So the more that we approve waivers, the more that we, you know, allow for exceptions, the more that we potentially put ourselves in a difficult position later on. So I think that, you know, the goal is to be uniform as part of all the other goals that we have. So I'm going to move this meeting forward. It went a little bit longer than I expected.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
This is important. The waivers resulted from this project being designed to reduce the amount of environmental impact, and I think everybody's on board with doing that, with every project. So, you know, when you're talking about standard widths, and that's what we should, you know, everything should be standard, standard is, it's wrong. It, it's absolutely wrong relative to designing developments in today's environment. You know, today's environment is to save the environment and stop putting down as much or more impervious surface than what's needed. You know, in, in what we just did here, we lessened the impact. We allowed a feasible project, a marketably feasible project, to produce with the least amount of environmental impact. That, that's really important from here on out, as land continues to be developed in this country, because we can save a lot of open space by approving projects such as this. This is the only way we should be focusing in on development of property from here on out. Standard subdivisions are, because of this standard, they just wipe out way more open space than, than is necessary for the proposed use.
Sure. Those standards were set to consider, you know, the impact of the town and other things, and, yeah, maybe some of it's outdated. I, I think that we, we need to consider each individual impact, and, and what is the domino effect it has to our town and our services and our taxes, essentially, so.
You know, over the years, I've had battles with DPW supervisors, superintendents, with fire departments, you know, police. You know, everybody has this mindset that you have to put down so much more impervious roadway surface than, than what is needed for the proposed use, and, you know, and that's why you get all these flooding conditions taking place. We're just imperviousing the whole surface of the planet, for crying out loud, when we can get away with half of it.
All right. So one of the things, obviously, today is the fifth, this normally is a workshop meeting. So I'm almost looking at the time, you know, the board might be a little-
Tom, did we close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Sorry. The board is closing the public hearing at 8:10 PM.
Thanks.
Thanks, Charlene. My wife's going to, you know, worry about you taking care of me versus her. All right. So I just want to move quickly through these things, because I know everybody gets a little tired, right, in our productivity level lessons. So I took a look at the action plan on the, on the master plan, excuse me, and really, there's two topics of discussion here, and I think that we can determine, you know, we have a couple of different subcommittees that work on these things that fall within these categories, one being essentially natural resources and water resources, right? I wish we had a concom person on this board that could put their insight into this. I'm not naming any names. So, no, but in reality, we have green infrastructure requirements, we have vegetated buffer, you know, land use regulations, things like that. So my thought is, we could have a natural resources and water resources sort of subcommittee that directs us to work on these master plan goals. And the other one would be mostly falls under transportation. So, and the, and I did have another question. CF16 on the master plan says, "Update master plan with potable water system updates." I don't know that we, you know, is that an ongoing thing that's already being done? Anybody know? John, do you know if that's being done?
What's the question?
Update master plan with potable water system updates?
We could definitely do that. I mean, because on a weekly basis, you know, there's progress being made with the implementation of the municipal-
Who, who would take ownership of that? Would it be?
You know what?
We have a water commission, water committee, right?
Well, Mark is the so-called superintendent, I guess. I don't know what his title is.
And the board of selectmen of the commissioners.
Okay. Is there any other public entity or any other group subdivided from these individuals? It's just a question of who would take, take this information and put it?
We, we should receive information from the board of selectmen on the progress that's being made, so that we, we stay up to date.
Okay. All right. I think that's a good point. I think that we should ask, and, and ask Bill, and if you could pass this along to Mr. Tallon, any water system updates, just make it as a point during our workshop meetings to present that information to us, just as part of that, that task. And then the next one is complete streets policy, green streets policy, falls under So in that sense, you know, that could be a subcommittee. And then the last one we have is land use. So there's really sort of three topics that we could, you know, target with subcommittees. So do we want to tackle them one at a time? Do we want them all running congruently? You know, that's my question to the board. Any input on that?
Well, it depends on, on what our resources are.
True.
If it's only us that's doing the work, then we can only do it one at a time. And I, I think of the ones that you listed, the natural resources one is, is probably the most, the most important. That's something that's kind of been on the back burner for, for a while. So it would be my choice to do that one.
And I think that in some ways, land use sort of falls in with that, maybe not, you know, they're kind of separate, but maybe they overlap in a sense.
Yeah. Now, the other, the last master plan update that we did just a couple of years ago, at this point, I guess, we didn't get good, we didn't get, we didn't get recreation, the recreation departments update in time for all, all kinds of reasons, to no end in particular fault. So that would be another area that would be not particularly our, I mean, it's our responsibility to get it in the master plan, but we wouldn't be actually doing the work. So we could, if you want, ask the rec department to work with the rec commission. We have the chair of the rec commission.
I need more here.
If they would be willing to review the existing chapter and provide-
I'll pass that, I'll look at it.
Get it.
I can certainly work with, with Jen to help that along.
If you could educate me, are, are these subcommittees typically put out for invite from public, you know, involvement, or is it typically just the working group in, in here managing the, these things?
The board of mayor. If there's someone, anyone in the public that would like to work on any, any one topic, by all means, let us, let us know.
Right now, aren't we doing transportation with the, you know, the-
Highway Safety Committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With that one, aren't we working on that now?
Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe not, I guess the question is the Highway Safety Committee working on a complete streets and a green streets policy. I don't know if anybody knows the answer to that.
I, I guess I would never bet my life on anything, but I'll buy everyone dinner if they are. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't, now, I mean, to be fair to them, nobody asked them to do it either, so.
Sure.
It's, it's not that they just- It's, it's not that they just decided not to do it.
Okay.
But if, if you're going to start a subcommittee.
Yeah.
For transportation, you're probably going to want to reach out to them because, you know, a good representation from that group in, you know, some involvement from the planning board, you know, that would really help. You know, as far as complete streets programming is concerned, especially this project here that's being planned for, you know. Right now, there's no planning being done for it. So the implementation is, you know, some ways out now. But if we're going to continue going with complete street program, we want to keep on extending the improvements along Main Street, you know, eventually out to 125 as we talked about before, you know, and all the way out to 125 in this direction, too. So this one project is very limited in distance along Main Street.
So, so really, what we have is three categories, the last one being land use, right? We did some, some work probably indirectly for land use because we worked on the C3 overlay. I mean, I, I'm of the mind that the town should have some, some better aesthetic standards. And, you know, I get that we have some sign, where a sign can be, how big it can be and things like that. But again, you know, we've got just a mishmash of various looking structures and types of construction and, you know, I think that if we have a better impact.
Yeah. And on that note, Tom, you know, every project that comes before us everywhere in town, you know, landscaping, you know, exterior lighting, signage, that should all be part of what we do.
Yeah.
Every, with every project and, you know, and really encourage them to do the best they can in that design aspect as well as architectural design of the buildings. So we, you actually do that on a, on a project by project basis, and that's probably the best catalyst, you know, means of producing that, you know, one project at a time.
Yeah.
You know, you can't really force people to do anything that exists out there. But when they're doing a rehab and they have to come here for permits, that's when you, you work with them.
Yeah. I mean, you know, we see one strip mall that, you know, was built in the seventies and it's, you know, wood and whatnot. And then the next one looks nice, it was built recently. I get that, you know, it's because of the age and the time that these things were built. But again, what goes in next week? Is it going to be somewhat uniform or at least a desirable outcome? And how much of an impact can we have on that? So let's just look at it from this way, just to keep things moving forward. Of the three categories, what would the board prioritize? You know, water resource, natural resources, transportation, or land use? Do you have some input on that?
I would say the natural resources.
Karen?
Okay. Yeah, I like transportation too, but I'll, I'll go along with the natural resources.
That's a good choice.
What's that?
Natural resources and water resources.
Sure. All right, I'm comfortable with that as well. You know, we don't want to tackle too many things at once because we won't get anywhere. So why don't we put some focus on that? Let's develop a strategy. And when we reconvene, you know, let us know who would like to be on that board? Do we want to try to invite the public? Do we want to involve CONCOM? Obviously, we do. Recreation Commission? And see what we can pull together as a working group of members of the town and come up with a strategy and see what we can do to protect that.
Tom, so we don't forget anything?
Yeah.
You know, transportation is all within the public right of ways. The jurisdiction of the public right of ways rests with the Board of Selectmen. So maybe we want to encourage the Board of Selectmen to have their own subcommittee if they don't have one already. I know they have Highway Safety, but, you know, a committee of their own focused on the complete streets program, you know. And maybe, you know, they'll start thinking along those ways, those lines of improving these public right of ways for multi-use of service, you know, better use for pedestrians, bicyclists, you know. That's what whole complete streets is all about, making them complete for everyone's use. And, you know, if, if they do submit or create their own subcommittee based on that program, they'll probably realize how important, you know, improving the ways, the public right of ways of the town is. And that requires involvement with our regional planning. Because that's where all the state and federal dollars come from, is through the regional planning process.
All right, I saw Bill nodding his head. He just said yes, so can I sure you put that in the minutes, Charlie?
Can I add something on that?
Yes.
Nope. Well, I, after the last meeting, I found out that RPC is willing to take half of what they first were asking for. They were asking for around 7,700. And now they're willing to take 3,800. And I don't know, Bill, maybe if you could bring it back to the Board of Selectmen, maybe to reconsider revoting that and?
I'll definitely bring it up with me next week, so.
Because they have brought it down quite a bit.
Right. They may end up, I would imagine the Board of Selectmen are going to probably want someone from here, probably come and talk to, talk about it, why it's so important. Because money is definitely tight right now. We're starting to make some sacrifices here and there, so.
When is the next Board of Selectmen meeting?
It'd be Monday night.
Monday night. Is there, with that in mind, with the person that obviously have an audience and any idea how soon into the meeting that would come?
I, Greg sets the agenda. I'll try to get a hold of Greg before then, see if, see if we can get it on.
Would, would anybody here be willing to speak to that on Monday night? Do they have the availability and the feedback?
Should we, we should hand it to Bill.
Tim, would you?
I could, well, I can try again.
Okay.
I mean.
Yeah, Tim, you were already present at the prior.
Because I think it is important.
I would like to nominate Laurie because obviously she's a better salesman than I am because I only got them down to five. Very, that's a good deal.
I mean.
Thirty-eight.
I don't know if we make a statement or if we can be live. Are we doing Zoom on that still?
No, we're in person.
We are in person. I just don't off the top of my head. And, you know, I'll, you know, full disclosure, I'm not sure that I can speak to it as well as someone else might understand.
That's what you're going to need, you're going to need someone who can really speak to it, why, the benefits, why you have to be on it.
Look, Tim has been involved with it for many, many years.
That's definitely been him, right.
Tim, we just nominate you for everything, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, but it is important.
It is.
It's for him, too.
It is.
All right.
But what I can do is I can at least talk to the chair, see if we can get it on, get it on the agenda.
Please let us know, yeah, and we can plan for that. I think that's an important thing. And you know what? It's, you know, it's already a win in a sense that we have saved the town some money and we're still looking to get the same value that we get out of the RPC and their support for us, so.
Do it all the way.
Okay.
The only thing I would add, I mean, I'll, if, if it gets on the agenda, as long as I don't have something else scheduled, which would be pretty rare, I don't mind going. But when they voted not to fund the RPC, it wasn't, had nothing to do with the RPC and its value to the town. It had to do with dollars left in the budget. Of which the claim from the town manager was zero. So it wasn't a, we don't think we're getting enough bank for the buck issue. It was, we don't have bucks in the bank to pay them issue.
Right, that is, that is the main, that is the main issue. But if you fight, you never know, then we may have to take it somewhere else. I mean, I can't guarantee what the vote's going to be.
Well, sure. The other thing that's happening, nobody knows how much money is going to trickle down from Washington at this point either, so.
Yeah. And I think that's important to restate, and I'm not, I haven't seen the exact minutes in video. We do need to be prepared for any type of federal funds that come, come our way or potentially come our way. And if we're not, you know, we're just going to miss out. Someone else will take it. And we've seen it with every other PPP loans and, you know, all these other things. Whoever was ready for it, got it. So I think that that's why this is more important than ever. All right, so from there, we are going to focus on the natural resources, water resources, and start, let's have some thoughts and discussions around what the best way to pursue a subcommittee will be. That might mean reaching out. And Tim, if you want to talk to the CONCOM and say, this is what the planning board's looking to do. Bill, you are no longer part of the Recreation Commission?
I'm just a Board of Selectmen liaison, you know.
I will reach out.
I got rid of my old hat.
Who, who is the board member? Who is the, who's running the?
The chair?
Yeah.
The chair is Kerry Paddles.
All right. I will reach out to Kerry and ask for input from the Rec Commission and see if they have some thoughts. Who else do we believe that would be?
Well, you have Jen Gussel, who's the director, rec director.
Who's that?
Jen Gussel.
She's the director of?
Recreation.
She's the director, okay.
So I would go to her before, before Kerry.
You got it. All right, we'll get some input from them, so I'll take that on. And then was there any other individuals in town that we want to get some input from? Maybe see if they want to be involved? All right, we'll start there. Yes, sir?
I just have one comment to make in regard to the 27th Annual Spring Planning and Zoning Conference. As we put out emails in regard to this conference, May 15th, Saturday, May 15th. It may be raining, may be a lousy day, so it would be a good day to be on a Zoom conference. It's free. The registration closes this Friday, the 7th. So if people want to attend this particular Zoom conference, the topics are planning board basics for planning board members. That's going to be taught by Steve Buckley. And then roles and responsibilities of the planning board. That's going to be taught by Ben Frost. And it gets over.
I feel like the, the meeting we had in the shed was basically that. It was centered around planning and land use.
And roles.
Yeah. So it does get over at 12:00 PM.
Okay.
If anybody's interested.
Can you have, can you or Dee send out the information?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it's a, it's a quick, easy, you know, and it might be a lousy day. Not usually when they have these conferences, but.
I've got a graduation to be at.
All right, that's a week from Saturday then, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have the, we know what our priorities in the master plan. Let's keep moving forward. Old business, John, is there, anybody have anything on the old business side?
Not really. I did send out a couple of weeks ago before our last meeting, publications having to do with smart growth and mixed use residential, I mean, yeah, mixed use, commercial slash multifamily residential corridors. Those are two really relevant publications having to do with communities that are trying to plan for, you know, their corridor improvements. So they're, they're very specific to what we'd like to do with the Route 125 C1 zoning district corridor. So if you do have a chance to read through those, perhaps for our next workshop meeting next month, that, you know, we could delve into that. What I'd really like to do is we did last year when we had Steve, was it Witten? Tim?
The guy that did the master plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve Witten.
Yeah, so we had, you know, we had the plans of the town and we were just marking up the plans relative to the zoning districts. Well, if we wanted to focus in on a plan of that C1 zoning district, blow it up and look what's there now and, you know, what room is left within the C1 district for future development purposes, you know, and say, start designing for ourselves in a conceptual manner, the actual road improvements, sidewalk improvements, you know, even trail improvements and interconnecting the, the parking lots within the development areas down there so that we have a better flow of traffic, you know, improve the safety of the pedestrian corridors down there and, you know, make the road more efficient than what exists right now. So we could, we could actually start doing that stuff ourselves. And I'll talk to you more about that, Tom.
Okay, that sounds good. I, yeah, it's super important that, that's a, you know, it's, it's not getting better.
No.
Since I've been here, so. And I think this is an important thing to say, you know, state, here we are, we're all a little tired, we've had a long day. Basically, we've talked workshop for 15, 20 minutes now. So I think it's important to make sure that we get back to our standard calendar, which is workshop meeting, you know. But I get it. I know why we did it. I'm not going back to that, but I want that to be our focus because I think that's really where we have an impact on the community.
Brainstorming is the greatest thing when you come to try to plan this stuff with Karen and whoever you were working with coming up with the C3 zoning district, which is a perfect transition district and the uses that came out of that for that particular area of town, you know, rather than just having one big, long C1.
Yep, I agree. All right, any other, John, any other information, any new business to bring up, FYIs, that kind of thing?
Just, you know, just Dee said that everybody would get a copy of this new document and everybody did.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Any, any additional thoughts or, not thoughts, but information about the larger project in Kingston? Has anybody seen or heard anything on that?
I haven't heard or read anything about it other than I assume it was approved.
Yeah, I believe it was.
The project that's abutting us in Newton, plan's just not going to originate for us to take any action on. The applicant or the owner tried to submit something, but it just, it wasn't signed, stamped, or prepared by a surveyor. So that's just not going anywhere at this point.
Okay. And I understand, Bill, that the, the Board of Selectmen did not vote yet on the sale of those two properties, or have they?
On the one on Rose Ave, we voted on to approve the sale of that one.
What about the other one?
And the other one, we've tabled that, you know, wanting more information, but right now, we're not taking any action on the other one.
Does that mean that if there's a, going to be a future discussion, or is it?
There probably would be. I mean, there's some, obviously, there's, some of it could be deemed prime wetlands. And obviously, that would change the whole discussion whether anything's going to happen with it. Plus, we want to know what does the, whoever purchased it, what does, what are the plans they want to do with that property?
Okay, so we'll, we'll be on the lookout for any changes in that.
North Street plans are coming in pretty soon, too.
Sorry, what?
The North Street subdivision that we've dealt with in the past. Dee was telling me that they're planning to come in pretty soon.
That's, oh, yeah, and I, that was kind of pre my time. That's the one on North Ave near the Haverline?
Yeah.
Okay.
Another fund planned.
Yeah. It hasn't changed at all. That's, it's a big discipline.
I thought that property was up for sale.
Yeah.
So it's, it's still the same owner? Oh, okay.
And the, the plans haven't changed from the last time, so.
I've heard, I heard some rumors about, you know, transactions of some commercial properties and things like that. So that we may see some stuff on that, may not. I don't, it depends what, what they're trying to do.
J and R is coming up.
Yeah, it's hard to tell right now what this market is actually going to do, you know. I mean, it, to me, it seems like so many people are on edge development wise because the prices of steel, plywood, two-by-fours, everything has just gone completely through the roof. And, you know, a lot of projects are now being postponed.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, and some, somebody wrote it, you know, the cost of a deck was a thousand, it's now 4,000, or something like that, you know.
Oh, yeah.
It's just ridiculous.
We're all going to be reduced to mini houses because it's all we're going to have. It'd be like post-World War II. All in ranches.
All right. Does anybody have any other input, thoughts, suggestions?
I'm going to come to the next meeting hopefully rested and well-mannered and willing to listen better.
I think that.
Went off the rails tonight, I'm sorry.
Well.
I just, I, you know, I went through a meeting the other day and a particular board member. I just, you know, I went through a meeting the other day, and a particular board member was telling two women traffic engineers and saying to the audience, just take whatever they say with a grain of salt. And not only did I find that offensive, but I'm sure they did. You know, these people are professionals, again, they qualified to study this, analyze stuff, and write reports on it, and present, you know, and I think, I think all professionals, as with everybody, should be treated with respect at all time, and, you know, I get a little offended when that doesn't happen, but, you know, everybody's entitled to their opinion, and, you know, I should be more practice myself in toning my demeanor.
Yeah, I think that we're all professionals here, and, you know, if I thought that anybody was really just that, you know, pain-in-the-butt person, then, you know, we could put that on the table. I think that our roles intersect, but maybe don't necessarily look at things the same way. And obviously, you've got a wealth of experience, you're in the planning department, it's, planning doesn't mean not doing anything. Planning means doing something. And I think as a planning board, we're not always saying, should we do something? Maybe it means we don't do something. And again, I'm comfortable with the board nitpicking certain things, if that's what it's, or not even nitpicking, looking at things with a cautious tone. But I think we worked it out. I do want to keep it civil.
The other thing is, too, Tom, and everybody, you know, there's so much learning involved with this. I mean, I learn every day, and it's a very complicated process, and it's very broad. And there's a lot of pieces that have to be put together to make things work, but, you know, for one thing, as long as everybody remains open-minded and objective, you know, and we'll learn, every time we come in here, we learn something new. And I think what we have to do as a board with these projects that do come in, we have to do better in our, in our asking of questions, you know, what we want to know so that we end up feeling comfortable when we, when it comes to a vote, when it comes to deliberating. So, you know, for this one, I learned with Dan, we need to know all the questions that we're going to have with the infrastructure that's going to be built, that's going to be under his care in maintenance, or his department's care and maintenance ad infinitum. So, that, that was a great question tonight. I couldn't recall if it was settled or not somewhere along the line. I don't think it was. But again, I don't think they did themselves, you know, any usefulness tonight in explaining stuff.
No, I think Charlie did do a good job, at least to me, when he finally said, you know, Dan, from the very beginning, did not want anything to be private. And I was under the understanding that, I don't think he really had a choice, or that he had an opinion, because I didn't hear it, and I didn't see it. So, he explained that very nicely, and that's actually what made me a little.
Yeah, but at the end, he did.
Yeah, no.
He didn't offer it up early.
That was necessary, though.
That would have helped early.
Yeah. Yeah, and Laurie asked a question, and, listen, I'm not going to rehash who said what, and he said, she said. I think that if the tone in the conversation, and if Charlie's a very level-headed individual and intelligent, explains things well, I think that if maybe the conversation was directly with the board to the person that the question was asked to, I think we might have gotten to a better path quicker. So, you know, we're, everybody wants to talk, everybody wants to say their opinion, but sometimes we just need to listen, so. All right, again, let's, let's keep the board civil.
Just a follow-up on that. Maybe a good way to interact with Dan is to develop a checklist kind of thing, so, you know, road width.
Right.
And we have the, we have the road design construction standards, I mean, that's, that's all, I mean, that's, to rehash that, but if there are these maintenance roads, drainage, and, you know, because without the checklist, then you're kind of imposing on Dan to know all of the zoning subdivision site plan regulations, which I'm sure he pulled a lot of them from reviewing plans for so many years, but, you know, we're all human, and if it's not your day-to-day job, it's, you know.
Yeah.
It's you to look at a plan and say, yep, everything is okay. And then, somebody asks a question later, well, what about the narrow swale over here or the easement here? And, oh, well, yep, we should, you know, so if we got a checklist, maybe, I mean, I don't have a 30-page checklist to do.
These MS4 requirements for a guy like Dan, his position, they're a nightmare.
Yeah.
Because it's just adding more work and no pay, you know, there's no more involvement, and, you know, you're going to end up needing more personnel with this stuff. You know, you have to draw in expertise from outside, too. Consultants cost a lot of money.
Yeah. Well, again, I don't think that, you know, we don't need to rehash the plans approved. I don't know, speaking of future sort of things, I don't think that Dan was thinking, oh, I can't wait to plow this road, and I can't wait to take care of the utility road. I think Dan was saying, it's going to be forced upon me, so I better talk now, or else I'll lose the ability to provide input. So, I'm not averse, you know, to having private roads, and I think the town should be able to still make that designation, but it's Board of Selectmen designation at the end of the day, whether or not it stays private or not, so.
But you know what? I applaud this town for having that policy in place. It has to be public unless it's a gated community, right? Because what happens, nine times out of 10, if not 10 out of 10 times, the people that live along it don't maintain it, they don't plow it properly, they don't do anything, and then, you know, a lot of selectmen get elected from communities like that, right? And then they try to force that public, that private way to become a public way. You know, well, you have a planning board decision, 20 years old, 30 years old, that says, no, that's a, that's a private way. And they all try, they always try to push it into the public realm. So, these private ways eventually politically make their way into being maintained by the town, and the town only has to plow it once, and they own it. You know, it's a nightmare.
Yeah.
If you go down that road.
Yeah, and I get it, and that's, you know, like I said, Dan wasn't like, yay, another road. He was just saying, I know what's going to happen, so.
How would you like to have a 70-unit subdivision, has its own sewer treatment facility that's outdated, that needs to be overhauled and rebuilt, and the roadways are starting to crumble, and, you know, you have to repave those, and you have only 70 houses to pay for, stuff like that? It becomes a nightmare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, but then it becomes the town's responsibility and then the taxpayers' dollar. So, that's kind of what our angle has been.
But see, they argue that they're paying as much taxes as you are, you know, and, you know, and you're on a public roadway.
Yeah.
So.
No, I get it.
Trash is picked up, you know, in private developments, municipal, if a municipality has trash pickup, they end up picking up everybody's trash. They've lost that argument.
But, but let's, let's just bring it back to, before we close this up, let's have some information, right? Some of the details changed, some of the information presented changed, and we, you know, we were right to pick up on that and ask questions. But if we can get those, a lot of these questions answered ahead of time, then I think that's great. We have less questions that we need, you know, that we don't know the information to, and maybe we can move quicker through some of these.
I mean, I don't, I don't blame this gentleman for coming in, the owner, tonight. I mean, this is the construction season. If you lose a month or two, you know, you're out.
Yeah.
You're out for the year, so, you know, when you.
Well, we, I think we will accommodate him two weeks from now, and if we could, and then, you know, I think he's still got some permits and things to get through, too, anyways, but I hear you. You don't want it to drag on. Neither do we. All right, any, any additional feedback?
Hmm, no.
Okay, we'll close the meeting at 8:47.